Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is June 13, 2018. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who've placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our Please remain standing and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The Board is in full complement tonight. Our solicitor, James Garrity, is away, and he is being replaced by Andrew Fremuth of the Whistler-Purstein Law Offices to my left. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session meeting on June 11, 2018, following the regularly scheduled workshop meeting on that date, to discuss one personnel matter and one matter of potential litigation. Now we move on to public comment. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those items listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on an agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. Do we have any public comment? Yes, Joan? That's okay. But can you come to the mic? Oh, yeah, that's fine. We're gonna lose... Can we bring the mic to you? Because we won't hear you otherwise. No, that's... Wait for the mic. It's not much comment if people can't hear you.
Joan Parsons...
Are you getting that right?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, Joan Parsons, 37 Hawkswell Circle, Orland. I'm here with our Vice President of the HOA, which is Dave Roberts. I'm Joan Parsons. I just have some questions. Regarding the temporary bridge that they're working on now, when is that supposed to be completed? A lot of our...
He's waving at you.
Okay. When is the temporary bridge planned on being completed, the temporary one? Is that December?
I believe it's November.
Okay, so that's gonna be November. When is the Upper Dublin... The one that's a permanent bridge? When is that?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. The permanent bridge will be done in around November.
Okay, so the temporary one is going to be worked on now?
Right.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. Who heads the bridge construction? Is that the Walsh Granite?
Walsh Granite Plenary.
Okay, so that's the person that heads it? The reason... There was another issue about the bus stop and everything that's going on on Pennsylvania Avenue. We were... I had talked to... I emailed Don about if we could change the bus stop from Orland Mill Road and Pennsylvania Avenue down to the area which is our emergency exit. You did send an email to Corporal Gross, but he has not gotten back to us to see if there's... If that would be feasible.
That's because the school district made a decision that they didn't like... Didn't want to move to that emergency driveway.
Okay, because Mr. Bray never got back to me on that either.
Your own email.
I was?
I got.
Okay. So here's my question. What he suggested was, since we have sidewalk on the one side and not on the side where you actually would walk to get onto the bus, he said it would be fine for the kids to walk down the part of the sidewalk, and then as soon as the bus pulls up, they can cross where that triangle is and then get onto the bus. Is that feasible that we can do that? I mean, is anybody gonna say you can't do that?
That's a school district question.
Okay. All right. Well, that's what he said could be an alternate. Okay.
I'll send you that email that I received.
So he didn't even weigh in on it that it could be done? He didn't even...
The emergency?
Yeah, he didn't even say, yes, there's no... The curb is fine or nothing?
No, he gave a very thorough answer, actually. I'll send it to you.
Okay, so we were told that the bus could not go beyond the... What do you call it? The triangle and pick them up there? That they had to be picked up on the other side because they can't block it. Now, it's a dead-end street, Hawkswell Circle, Orland Mill Road. So I don't understand why they couldn't pull the bus a little bit beyond that to pick up the kids right where the sidewalk is. Since it's, you know...
Yeah, this is... I remind you, this is a school district issue. You might want to talk to them about it because we don't have any control over it.
No?
No.
All right. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the information... We're gonna go with the... We do not want Walsh Granite to put anything on our property. Now, Sal Peon sent us an agreement that they want us to sign about the land development and all that. Now, any permits that you guys signed off on, or the engineer, or whatever, can we get copies of whatever is signed before we actually sign this final agreement with Sal Peon, which he would like me to do as soon as possible?
They can come see what you have, right? Yeah, sure.
Can you get that to us? Okay, that would be great. Now, the other thing is, with the construction going on, since we're not gonna allow them to park into our off-street eight parking space, we're going to put a sign up to say, you know, this is for the development. Are they gonna be permitted to go anywhere on our common ground, common space, to put any kind of supplies or pull trucks in where all the grass has grown or whatever? Are they gonna be allowed to do that near the Wes Hicken Watershed where the trail is?
They may be if they stay within the PennDOT right-of-way.
So where does that end, the PennDOT right-of-way?
We'd have to look at plans, but it's...
Can you let us know? Pardon me?
It's pretty big. It's pretty wide.
Hmm. Well, can you let us know?
Sure.
So in other words, they could just come in and plop stuff right all where the trees are and the grass and our monuments?
I don't know specifically where they would do it. That's why I said to you, you could play pro quo with them. If the homeowners association's looking for something to get done, they have a lot of equipment, a lot of labor there that you may be able to say, you park there, but we want you to do...
Yeah, but... But we really don't need anything. And the other thing is, you know, the first time they put that big truck and it went onto the grass, I asked him, could you please not do that? The very next day, he did the same thing. So I don't know if I would trust them. And who would be paying for that? Would that come from the county? Or where would they get the money if they were gonna work something out with us?
That's the contractor himself.
The contractor himself? Okay.
Yeah, for the right to park in that little parking lot, which they have no right to do.
Okay.
For that, they might do you a favor by doing some project for you if you're interested. If you're not, then you're not.
Okay.
But that's not gonna... They're gonna need a place to park. So they may be parking other places.
Right. Well, it looks... I mean, it looks like there's plenty of, you know, areas on the Upper Dublin side where they can park wherever. But we didn't have any idea that something like this was gonna happen, you know, that we were gonna see big vehicles parked in that area, which really don't fit because if you come out and look at it, it's very small, it's tight. And they've already sort of like, you know, wrecked the area, so I can't imagine, you know, four or five months down here what it would look like. So we already decided as a Board that we don't want it. So just to let you know. That's all. Thank you so much.
Okay. In the future, you know, you might get better answers if you just came during working hours where you could look at the plans and the maps and whatnot and sit down with staff. I mean, we're happy to see you here, but that might be more useful to you. And then they can answer questions.
Okay. Well, we also have a copy... We have all the copies of the land development at our HOA, which we have looked at.
Good.
We just wanna see how far into our development could they be storing things.
Okay. Well, they can give you that answer of how wide the right-of-way is.
And then would that also right-of-way go into Wes Hicken Watershed? Would they be permitted to go in there too? Or is that gonna be preserved and they're gonna say, oh, no, we can't go in there?
I don't know the complexities of how that easement works and how... I don't know.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Do we have other public comment? Come on down. Mike will bring the phone back to you.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Mary Burke. I'd like to inquire as to any updates with the township property formerly known as the Tank Heart Property.
Okay. Don, you wanna handle that?
Sure. BL Companies, the environmental consultant, is still doing groundwater testing. I think they're finished with the soils testing. They did testing within the buildings themselves. That was the part that hadn't been tested before. Now that they've done another round of groundwater testing, PADEP wants them to test the water off-site. They want it to identify in which way the groundwater flows, which is, we know now from their testing, that it flows towards the Vecchione property. So now they want two off-site wells being placed on Vecchione's property and do testing to see what the water quality is off-site.
Okay. Is there... Are there any timeframes in place for this testing?
No.
So it could be indefinite? Or is there months, a matter of months?
Well, we first... I met with Tori Vecchione yesterday, and while he's open to the concept of putting the two wells on his property, he doesn't control it. It's a family thing. So he has to get the plan together, so to speak, to talk about it and to see if we can get permission to do that. The testing's gonna go on for a long time. I'm not sure at what point PADEP will say to us, okay, what you've given is, so far, it's going to be for us to say you X, Y, and Z. We thought originally it was gonna be sometime this summer. I'm not sure it's gonna happen until we get these off-well drilled and some testing off of that.
Would the township be paying for those off-site wells? Or is that Vecchione's responsibility?
Oh, no. It's our responsibility.
Okay. All righty. And have there been further communication with the DEP and the township concerning the development of this property?
No.
Is there projected to be any communications with the DEP?
Once we get the answers, we know that DEP wants to know about the groundwater. Then we're gonna sit down with them and ask them if our plan to mitigate is satisfactory and what more they want from the township.
So I understand, then, based upon your response, that DEP has not commented about the extent of the cap on the property. Is that correct?
That's right. And they will... We actually asked them to comment beforehand so we could start planning and doing things, and they absolutely will not do that.
Okay, until the... Just so I understand, until the water and the ground testing has been completed?
It will... I don't know that it'll ever be completed, but we're gonna have to do a couple of rounds off-site to give them the information they're gonna look for. But I think, as I understand, that the monitoring of the groundwater is gonna probably be a long, drawn-out thing, even after it's redeveloped.
Okay. And there is an enormous amount of dirt that has been accumulated on that property. Is there a plan in place in the event that that full amount of dirt is not needed for the cap and the construction of the ball fields?
We had the township engineer measure it and monitor the amount of soil that went in there, and he's satisfied that that's just about what we need.
To cover what area?
To cover pretty much the entire property and also create berms for future landscaping.
Okay. When you say the entire property, are you referencing within the gated area?
No.
Outside of the gated area? So has that... Is that now a foregone conclusion that this will extend beyond the fenced-in area?
No.
Okay, then, so if it's not a foregone conclusion, is... Would it be conceivable that the fence would remain intact where it currently is and there would then be excess dirt?
No, we would just make the cap thicker or make the berms higher. The soil that came from there is principally from this project, which saved us money, and from the high school football field project to save the school district money.
So no matter what size the area is developed, that full amount of soil is gonna be used no matter what is necessary?
We believe so, yes.
Do you think that that's reasonable in the event that you're gonna not need all of this and you're making a round peg fit into a square hole?
I personally don't follow your question.
My question is, is that you have X amount of dirt, and that is not needed, that full amount of that dirt is not needed for the construction that you intend? But regardless, you are still going to use that dirt?
Yeah, we're gonna try to lose it there just to save the money to not haul it off-site.
Would you like to see less dirt in the interim?
There are... Well, it is three stories high.
Yeah.
But my concern, and we've, you know, have not said anything about that, but my concern is that the area will be extended further, that is beyond what is needed.
Because there's more dirt?
Correct.
An excuse to extend it beyond what's needed.
Correct. And a higher berm that's needed, wider berm, losing trees, bushes, shrubbery, and a habitat for the animals and wildlife and birds.
Isn't that habitat you're referring to outside of the fence line?
It's right, and...
It's outside of the fence line?
It's outside of the fence line.
Okay, so we haven't determined... DEP has to weigh in to determine how we're gonna deal with the fence line, is the conversation we had previously.
Right.
And until they make that determination, you know, I don't follow... I mean, do you want us to take the dirt off-site and then bring it back if we need it? I'm not quite following what you're asking for.
That would be very nice if the dirt was, you know, decreased, the amount of dirt that would be on there. And that would be ideal. And also, my concern is, is that for your plan, it's going to widen the area that is ultimately developed based upon the amount of dirt that you have on the site versus the actual plan. And when you have a higher cap, you would need to feather that out for the runoff. And so you would make that fit your plan rather than the plan determine, dictate what is needed.
Well, I don't think we're gonna... I'll give you our word. We're not...
Yeah, I think you have the cart in front of the horse.
We're not gonna let the tail wag the dog here. Our engineer seems to think that it's a comfortable amount. It's why Don's saying what he's saying. But we don't know how it's gonna come out. As you know, the neighbors have a lot of opinions on how it's gonna come out. It looks like we're gonna lose a field there. We're trying to figure all that out. But we're not gonna end up losing sight of what impact the dirt will have on the plan, and that won't be the tail that wags the dog. We're gonna do the best plan. And certainly, the elevation will be something we'll have a factor into that.
Okay, 'cause in listening... I'm sorry.
Just speaking only for myself, and I, you know, would repeat this publicly, I've heard your concerns and I've heard the concerns of your other neighbors. And I told you before, and I'll say it again, I'll continue to say it publicly, I will advocate for your situation...
I appreciate that.
...regardless of the size of the dirt. So the dirt won't dictate the encroachment on, I think, the areas that you're concerned about, and I will continue to do that.
Okay, because in listening to Mr. Berger, it seemed like that that dirt, the township, the schools, all save money by having it all there. So now we're forced to have to reckon with it.
No, and I think that the township was considering... I mean, I think we did plant some seed earlier in the spring to keep the dust and kind of... So I think we're trying to recognize the impact it has on the area. But I sure...
Can I ask you a question? Is it your thought that if we go wider, we'll have two feet of dirt, but if we go narrow, we'll have 10 feet of dirt, and we'll raise the elevation on the property 10 feet? That's a drastic idea, but is that what your thinking's gonna happen?
My thinking is, and the residents as well...
Sure.
...are very concerned that this field will have to be expanded beyond the fence line due to the amount of dirt that has been placed there intentionally by the township. And thereby, we would lose our berm... I'm sorry, the buffer.
Okay. No, I understand what you're saying.
Right.
But, I mean, I don't agree that that's gonna happen that way. Just because we have the dirt doesn't mean you're gonna lose the fence. I mean, we've looked at a plan. We've asked them to develop a second plan. We've collectively said we're gonna wait until DEP weighs in and tells us what we're allowed to do or what we can do before we even go to the next plan. So I think we have a process that we're in the middle of that we're gonna have to wait and see. But I don't think the amount of dirt dictates what the plan's gonna be. I honestly don't believe that for myself. I mean, I don't wanna speak for everybody.
No, I think that's where we are.
That's what Jeff said.
The amount of dirt does not dictate the plan.
Okay, I appreciate that. I appreciate that because I wouldn't...
So we'll keep working with you as we learn. Right now, we're waiting for DEP. You should also know that there was a hearing on the amount of compensation that we have to pay, and there's a second hearing coming up in July. So that's a number that we're trying to... This Board is trying to figure out.
The Board of View.
Yeah.
So that has not been consummated as of yet?
No. No, well, they appealed it, so it's the... This is the appeal.
Okay. And a question you mentioned, Glenn, about the next proposal for the fields. So I take it, from listening to you, there is not another proposal that has been drawn up besides the original proposal?
There is not.
Okay.
It's sort of been...
There's nothing been presented.
Earlier, it was projected that we would have maybe the ball fields in place in the fall. In listening to you folks, that it sounds like that's remote.
Correct. We can't control the timetable at this point.
Okay. All right, so, great.
Yeah, I'd probably tell you it'd be next fall, but, I mean, that's personal opinion.
Next fall, you're thinking?
If we're lucky, next fall. And, I mean, I was thinking next fall. Don said if we're lucky, because I think this process with DEP and the off-site wells and the testing, I think that's gonna take some time.
And I think even further than that, Glenn, the Board of View... Well, Jeff said that that was an appeal to get to the Board of View. The Board of View is also appealable to the Court of Column, please. So this is gonna go on.
When you talk about the Board of Review, are you referring to the amount of money for the sale of the property?
Yep.
Okay.
It's not the sale, it's the amount of money for the condemnation.
Right.
Right.
Right, for compensation.
It's what we offered and what they want.
Okay.
And somewhere in the middle, somebody makes a decision on what's fair.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public at this point? Okay. There being none, we will move into the committee reports. I will start out as the Chairman of the Internal Affairs and Zoning Committee. The first item I have, item number one on the agenda, is the June bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the May check reconciliation in the amount And the June bill listing in the amount of $581,070.94. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The next matter is the zoning board. The zoning board will be meeting on Monday, June 25, at 7:00 in this room, the Springfield Township Building. The agenda will be Lucoil from New York concerning the property at 6:30, Bethlehem Pike-Erdenheim. That would be at Montgomery Avenue. The property currently has two ground signs with a total of 45 square feet. They are seeking to install a single ground sign of 55 square feet. The subject property is located in a business to district, and that will be the one matter on the agenda at that zoning hearing. You're welcome to attend if you are interested. Moving on, that's item two. Sorry, I turned my page. Where's this business tax auditor?
Right there.
No, but where is it on the agenda?
I don't think I get it. It's on there.
Okay. The next one is item 2A on the agenda, because we forgot to put it on the agenda, concerning our business tax auditor. McCarthy &amp; Company, PC of Lafayette Hill, Pennsylvania, is the township business tax auditing firm. In a letter dated June 1, 2018, McCarthy requested an increase in their hourly rate from $75 an hour to $90 an hour. McCarthy has not requested an increase in their hourly rate for 15 years. And I point out that not only have they not requested a rate for 15 years, but they represent about a dozen municipalities, and all the others are more than 105 an hour. So even raising ours from 75 to 90, we're getting a deal. I'm not quite sure why, but that's the backstory. Therefore, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve an increase in the hourly rate charged to Springfield Township to $90 per hour effective July 1, 2018 for McCarthy &amp; Company, PC, the township's business tax auditing firm. That is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous...
We'll give you free rein to come back next month.
You gotta raise. Get another one. That concludes my report, so we will move on to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items this evening. First, I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1450, a resolution authorizing an application to PennDOT to add two "do not block intersection" signs on Paper Mill Road adjacent to Fraser Road. That's my first motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. Next, I move the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1451, a resolution authorizing an application to PennDOT to lengthen the eastbound left-turn lane on Paper Mill Road for northbound Route 309. So it's right down here. So that's my motion.
That's your motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Shum. We move to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have first a report on the recycling. I'm pleased to announce that during the month of May 2018, Springfield Township residents recycled 226.2 tons of materials with a household participation rate of 81.2%. The net cost for the month to the township was $16,890.91. My second report, it's actually a motion, is regarding the environmental reappointment of three members to the Environmental Advisory Commission. So I move that the Board of Commissioners reappoint Patrick Eddis, Zeta Cross, and Michael Needleman to new three-year terms of service as members of the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. The new three-year terms of service shall expire June 14, 2021. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Wow, any questions or comments?
I would just make the observation that these are three very, very engaged and knowledgeable people, and they are always contributing their time and their ideas to the committee.
Great. Any further comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. We move on to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Eddie Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one announcement and one motion. I'll start with the announcement. For the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, please announce that there is currently a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Residents interested in serving on the committee should send a letter of interest or resume to Donald E. Berger, our Township manager, at 1510 Paper Mill Road in Windmore, PA. The Board of Commissioners will consider meeting with the interested residents as a part of the July 9, 2018 workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners. My second announcement is actually a motion. The McKelvey Park ADA Improvement Project consists of the demolition of an existing gravel and mulch playground, surfacing and asphalt areas, the installation of concrete sidewalks, the creation of an entry plaza, installation of playground safety surfacing, construction of asphalt pathways, mulch beds, and the relocation of existing lampposts and benches. On June 7, 2018, Springfield Township opened four bids for the projects. The bids ranged from a low of $120,000 to a high of $183,757. I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Plymark Construction Company of Plymouth, PA, for their low bid price of $120,142 to construct the McKelvey Park ADA improvements. The project is being funded through a HUD grant allocated through the Montgomery County. That is my motion.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please record a unanimous vote.
That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. We move to the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several items this evening. First is Traffic Engineering Services. On June 1, 2018, the township opened five responses to a request for proposals for professional traffic engineering services with regard to the East Mill Road, Penoke Road, Highland Avenue, Flower Town Traffic Corridor. The traffic improvement analysis includes, one, analysis of the roadway and/or site-conditioned improvements needed on East Mill Road and Highland Avenue to achieve safer egress from Highland Avenue 1 to East Mill Road, and, two, review of warrants for a multiway stop intersection on East Mill Road at a Penoke Road or Big Highland Avenue. The cost estimates received range from a low of $10,900 to a high of $32,416. I move that the Board of Commissioners award a contract to Traffic Planning and Design Incorporated of Parks and PA for their low proposal valued at $10,900. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
My next item is Police Corporal. I move that the Board of Commissioners promote Police Officer Nelson Whitney to the position of Police Corporal effective July 9, 2018. Corporal Whitney was evaluated through a written and oral interview conducted by Safe City Solutions LLC, and also received an outstanding performance evaluation from the Chief of Police. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have one comment, and that is, this opening is -- was created by, actually, two retirements, and one about to happen, and we're promoting from within, and it's -- we had great candidates, and it's -- we interviewed three for each opening, and it's just great to see these guys and ladies move up the chain of command, and we have police that we're very proud of and high quality, and it's always a pleasure to do this. It'll be even more fun next month, because we will, assuming this vote goes through, we will be swearing him in. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Next item is in regards to handicap accessible parking. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code Section 107-35, Schedule 12, Special Purpose Parking Zones, to repeal the handicap parking space on the north side of Pleasant Avenue from 1.50 feet west of Elm Street to 1.22 feet westerly thereof. The on-street handicap parking space is no longer needed at this location. That is my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please record a unanimous vote.
Next item is White Marsh Avenue Parking. I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code Section 107-33, Schedule 10, parking time limited by repealing the parking restrictions on the north side of White Marsh Avenue from Gordon Road to Stanton Avenue at all times except Saturday and Sundays. That is my motion.
Are we doing multiple motions here?
I believe there's multiples.
Okay, okay, well, we'll do that. We have the first motion, which is the repeal of the existing. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then, I guess, anybody wanna comment at this point, or explain what's going on?
I'd like to comment.
John, go ahead.
I did speak to a couple residents that are on White Marsh Ave., and would urge the Board to maybe delay this vote for a month, just to allow further analysis and further discussion amongst some of the residents. My concern, and this is echoing the concern of some of the residents on White Marsh Ave., is that this act, this limiting the parking on both sides, would raise animosity on the street and create some fights, and I think if we can just delay it for a month, allow some analysis and some discussions to see if we can get to a better place.
Okay.
And I would also like to comment that I also agree with that. I'd like to have a meeting with the neighbors and involve some of the neighbors who weren't able to attend Monday night's meeting, so that everybody's involved in the discussion, so that we can, like Commissioner Cobb said, look at this for 30 more days.
Well, why don't we do that? But I remind you that if the first responders tell us they can't get up there with cars on both sides, that's gonna trump everything, you know, and that's an important fact. But we can have that discussion, we can't have back-and-forth during the meeting, nor are we, I think, about to resolve this anyway. But we can have that discussion, that's fine.
I don't think that we're gonna disregard what STEMZ is--
Right, STEMZ is emergency management.
-- just wanna make sure that there's more discussion with the neighbors. Like Commissioner said, we don't have neighborhood infighting and parking spots and altercations. We wanna make sure everybody's included in what's actually happening there, look at it. If, you know, there's instances where there are cars that take up two spots purposefully, I would, you know, take the opportunity to consider adding parking lines so that there's adequate parking spaces, so that, you know, we don't have residents like we do on Rich Avenue that purposefully take up two, three spots 'cause they don't want cars in front of their house. So we wanna try to work through this. This is not to say that we're not gonna come back to this, but, you know, I would like to look at it.
Well, why don't you make a motion to withdraw your motion?
Okay.
And then if that -- we'll let everybody weigh in, and if that passes, then we can have a meeting and let everybody be heard.
Okay, so I make a motion to table this issue--
No, withdraw it.
Withdraw this motion and we table it till next month.
Okay, we have a motion to withdraw, do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? So that will give us a chance to let everybody be heard and try and come up with the best outcome. All in favor, please signify by--
I just have a comment.
Oh, sorry.
I would like staff to, at least our staff liaison, to emergency management to issue a letter from the emergency management board, and for their opposition or for their approval of this parking issue.
Okay.
We did not receive -- we usually receive a recommendation in writing.
Oh, it's oral, okay.
We didn't receive a recommendation in writing, I would like that.
Yeah, and they can be specific.
Correct.
That's helpful.
Correct.
Great. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, please record a unanimous vote. That was a big circle we went in, so we will be, I think that's why you all are here, scheduling a meeting and trying to figure that out. Mike?
Mike, is there any warrants in doing the third motion? This is to -- that would create the no parking near the emergency accessway into Overly, the new Overly, and then also at that harsh turn up towards Stanton Avenue, which -- and on the opposite side that we're talking about later.
No, I actually think that we need to move with the turn motion. This is just the one side.
Okay, well, you can do that.
The next one we're gonna do is for the terms.
Well, then you can do that.
That's the second one.
Yeah, I was looking at that.
And then just explain so they understand what you're doing.
I know you were -- there's White Marsh Ave. residents here. After the meeting, I just want a couple words, just to let you know where we're actually gonna go with this and why. We want the 30 days to review a little longer. It's not that nothing's gonna be stopped.
May I ask when your meeting on this would be?
What's July's?
Oh, our meeting will be, what, July 9th, or -- but we will get you guys together to have a meeting.
We'll send a letter out and let you know.
We'll try and come up--
We'll have a meeting here, to see if yous can come out, well, you know, yeah.
I'm just concerned because we have a vacation planned.
We'll do our best. But are you gonna make, then, the other motion, or not?
The radius, yes, I think.
Yeah, okay.
I move that no parking signs shall be established on the south side of White Marsh Ave. from 1.75 feet easterly from Gordon Road to 1.95 feet easterly thereof. And no parking signs between signs shall be established on the south side of White Marsh Ave. from 1.50 feet west of the right-angle radius to 1.50 feet of the radius of White Marsh Ave. That is my motion.
Okay, I think that's self-explanatory. That shouldn't come as a big surprise and hopefully not be problematic. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying -- any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Last is Rouge Ave. parking restrictions.
Before you make that motion, can we not make that motion this month? I did not have a chance to reach out to Terry, and I'd like to do that before we move on that.
It's fine with me.
I don't see any harm in doing it.
That's fine with me, Mike, you can just not make it.
That's fine.
Yeah, that way we don't have to repeal--
It's in your ward, right?
It's in my ward, yes.
Just to be clear, yeah.
I would like the opportunity--
Council manic privilege on that one.
Yes, thank you very much.
[laughing]
Write that down.
Okay, so I guess that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. Finally, we move to the Chairman of the Library Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am pleased to report that on Saturday, June 3, the Friends of the Free Library of Springfield Township held an open house at the library. 668 people attended. We had live music that was featured Reverend Chris and the High Rollers, Pete Moses for the children, and refreshments and our new friends to round out the day. I'm also very excited to promote that the kickoff for the 2018 Summer Reading Club is this Saturday, June 16, at 10:30. This is a great family-oriented program and great for kids for the summer. The theme this year is libraries rock, and ours certainly does. So keep your eye on the library website for current programs and sign up for the library newsletter on the homepage. That is it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. That concludes our committee reports. We are again open for public comment, if there be any going once, going twice. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Adjourned, okay. 15?
Yeah.